I'd like to call the Order of City Council Meeting of April 29. I'm going to fill in these lines. If I can keep you in your thoughts on the tragedies in California and Sri Lanka, keep the victims and families a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I would like to lead them.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You seated? Thank you. Call to order, please. Roll call for the meeting of April 29. Councillor Ogman.
Here.
Councillor Junta.
Present.
Councillor Khan.
Present.
Councillor Ryan is absent. Councillor Shan.
Present.
Councillor Tanta.
Here.
Councillor Maudle.
Present.
Councillor Zee.
Here.
Councillor Devlin.
Here.
Councillor Connell is absent. And Council President Earle's.
President.
We have a quorum, Mr. President. Any late file items? We do not have any true late file items. The councillors have nothing on their desk, with the exception of a mayor's update. Remove the public comment, it appears.
I will try to politely enforce the council's two-minute rule. I won't try not to do mid-sentence, but I will try to keep it fairly brief. We have a fairly large, could be a fairly large agenda tonight. First up, Jenny Donahue. You could give your address, please.
My address is 18 Church Street. Good evening, Jenny Donahue. Sort of here today as Chair of the Disability Commission to thank you all. You're going to be, I'm going to preemptively thank you all. I can't imagine anyone's going to vote no on the transfer to the Swings Fund. We're really excited. This is going to complete the full project of Swings. And I don't know if any of you have seen anything in the paper, any pictures, but already so many kids are happy and this is going to, this is going to finish the project. So I really just want to thank all of you. I also just am going to say I support the NYS feasibility study and I really support the transfers for equipment, especially the bucketry equipment. That is something we really need. But also Brian Greenberg is being reappointed to the Disability Commission on his behalf of thank you and just, he's done a great job, so thank you again. Okay?
Gloria.
My name is Gloria Polia. I live at 22 Thayer Street, Newburyport. Please get the senior tax relief proposal on the November election ballot. I purchased my home in Newburyport in 1992, 27 years ago. My real estate bill has increased to being four months of my yearly income. I am 81 years old, I'm single, and of low income. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Menon.
Bruce Menon, 148 High Street, Pardon me, 2. Almost 25 years ago, I stood in front of this city council in this room and gave the recommendations of the youth committee, as pointed by Mary Carrier. And the recommendations were that we needed a youth commission and we needed to really look at trying to find a permanent place for kids in this city to be able to go for activities. It was almost 25 years ago. Tonight, you have before you a transfer for a feasibility study. I would urge you to support that feasibility study. It's just absolutely time for us to do this. Thank you very much.
Phyllis Hill.
Hello, I'm Phyllis Hill. 32 Low Street, Heritage House with many senior citizens. I wanted you to know that many, many of us are in full support of this transfer. I've been affiliated with the Newburyport Youth Services through Emma Andrews Library and I think it's a wonderful thing, so please do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Preston.
Hi, Connie Preston, 18 Atwood Street. But I really come to you tonight in the capacity as the Chair of the Tree Commission. And I hope since I come bearing gifts that you'll afford me a few moments to brag about the Tree Commission because frankly, we have a lot to brag about right now. We have recently completed an inventory of the 11,246 trees that are owned by the city. Of those 5,856 are street trees, with the remainder being in public spaces such as parks and cemeteries. This has been a Herculean effort by the Tree Commission and most specifically by Chris Miller here to my left. Chris is the former Chair of the Tree Commission, now the Vice Chair because I won't let him go anywhere. But, so Chris, during his tenure as the Chair of the Tree Commission, has been not only a fearless leader, but also a tireless advocate for the Tree Commission and quite frankly, a tremendous asset to the city. But Chris didn't do the tree inventory all on his own. I think 11,000 trees inventoried by a single person might kill them. So in conjunction with Chris, we've also had over 600 hours of volunteer time, mostly by other Tree Commissioners. As well, we were able to hire two of Newburyport's finest young people in, as interns last summer in Emily Noonan and Max Reed. And we were able to do all 11,000 of those trees. We had some help by the Parks Department as well for those trees within parks. I'm very proud to say that the inventory, now that it is completed, is used by the tree warden, an assistant tree warden, to direct the activities of the tree crew every single day through DPS. One of the other really wonderful things that came from the completion of the tree inventory is the gift that I've given you all, which is the very newly published Guide to Newburyport Trees. So this is a fantastic reference guide for the 85 species of trees that you would find on the streets of Newburyport. It has wonderful pictures of each of the trees, as well as detailed information on the leaf, flower, fruit, bark, and habitat of each of the 85 species of trees. Again, this was not done by any one person. I want to call out the people that really put enormous amounts of effort into this, again, being Chris Miller, as well as fellow, other fellow Tree Commissioners, Jane Niebling, Sheila Tanger, and Dave Delasky. We also got tremendous resource from Tim Heatwall, who works very closely with us but as a resident of Newbury, is not available as a Newburyport Tree Commissioner, as well as Emily Noonan, the intern that we used last summer. She carried this project forward and during her junior year of university abroad in Scotland, so she was on an exchange program, she really helped us to move this forward. So it's very important to me that, I note that both the inventory as well as the guide did not use a penny of Newburyport taxpayer dollars. So in conjunction with all of volunteer effort, we were also able to secure a DCR grant to pay for all the expenses, including the interns. And so now this guide, we've given each of you, but we are making it available to the public at a suggestion donation of $20. You can go to the website for Friends of Newburyport Trees, which is www.fonrees.org. There'll be more information there. And any of the proceeds will be used for the purchase, planting, and tree care for further street trees in Newburyport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Hall.
Hello, Sarah Hall, 8 Arthur Welch Drive. Speaking tonight in support of Newburyport Youth Services, I urge you to fund the feasibility study for the Low Street location. The $65,000 will be money well spent on the future of our city's youth. It's important to understand that NYS is so much more than just an after-school program. Their dedicated staff work tirelessly to support our children's physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Through initiatives like youth asset building, student council groups, and their new Youth Thrive Program, NYS offers something unique and essential that complements the efforts of our schools and families, building character and developing responsible, compassionate citizens. My 12-year-old son is a huge fan of NYS Summer and Vacation Week programs. He has asked about going there after school, but I've said no because of the inconvenience of the South End location. The central location on Low Street would be far more convenient for many families and allow the NYS programming to reach a wider audience. I also appreciate the available parking, green space, and the room to grow at the proposed location. Please say yes to Newburyport's youth. Say yes to NYS. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Callahan.
Hello, Brock Callahan, 29 Warren Street. I'm here to support the feasibility study and when it does go through, any money NYS might need for the new building. They've been in two terrible buildings for years and years. Andy knows, I know, my kids know. All the kids in town deserve a structure that is well-built, purpose for them, and not falling to pieces. Thanks.
Jessica Olson, 28 Charles Street. I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of Newburyport Youth Services. A year ago, securing a permanent home for NYS that will meet its needs into the future became a city priority. And though there is an abundance of supporters for this, including city council and a number of people outside in the hallway right now, Youth Services is still in the same temporary situation, making do with challenging physical space in the Brown School. However, we are not exactly where we were a year ago. The site on Low Street has been identified, the governmental stars have aligned, and the centralized property right near the schools has been made available to the city to purchase for NYS at a quarter of its market value. This is a major accomplishment and opens the door on a seemingly ideal opportunity for Youth Services. Given that in the past year, no other viable options have been pursued, and that if this site lives up to its expected promise, it will offer the type and amount of space NYS needs and a location that offers more youth and families easier access to Youth Services, why wouldn't we follow through with a feasibility study that will allow a decision to be made whether to move Youth Services to this site? If we don't do the feasibility study, we risk NYS sitting in limbo indefinitely at the Brown School, which is neither physically comfortable nor laid out ideally for Youth Services. The inefficiencies and issues with the building also make it an expensive option for indefinite occupancy. Furthermore, not knowing where Youth Services is going to be housed in the long term ties up decisions regarding the Brown School site. On behalf of Friends of NYS, I encourage city council to approve the feasibility study and allow the necessary data to be collected so you can evaluate available options for Youth Services, ignite forward momentum in decisions that have been stalled, and secure a permanent home for this very important department. Please say yes to NYS. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Olson, 28 Charles Street, Newburyport. I agree with everything Jessica said, as usual. I would like to just add one thing to what Jessica said is, the community group, and I think it was led maybe by a couple of councillors, put together six options for the Brown School. And four of those six options involved Youth Services relocating to another part of the city. So I think in order to move forward with Youth Services and with Brown School, I think this is a really important decision. We need this information from the feasibility study to make a decision for not only Youth Services but the Brown School, which I think is very important for the city as well. So I encourage you to vote yes for NYS and approve the feasibility study. Thank you.
Looks like you already know.
Good evening, Paul Aquaviva, 62 Bonfield Street. The Youth Services is one of the things that makes our city great. It has amazing programming and it does great things for our children. Now we have an opportunity to add that great programming to a location that will really invite more students in and give them more accessibility to that great programming. So I think it's a perfect fit and certainly requires more studies, so approving the funding for this is the right thing to do. So appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Dougherty, 13 Purchase Street. I'm going to also read my statement because I have a tendency to ramble. I'm speaking to urge councillors to fund the feasibility study for the Low Street location. As a neighbor to the Brown School, I'd like to say that I followed the community exploration process and the RFP process regarding the Brown School closely. And I feel the Brown School cannot serve two purposes. It cannot support the robust youth programming NYS provides, as well as become a residential development or other facility that maximizes the value of the Brown School as an asset for the city. I also do not know anyone in my neighborhood, and I chat with a lot of people, who are eager to see a combination project. The neighborhood is just too dense. The Low Street site can potentially meet all of the current and forecasted needs of NYS at potentially an exceptionally appealing price and should be found, and should it be found to have any flaws or complications through the feasibility study, I think that those probably will pale in comparison to the flaws and the complications that are currently at the Brown School to consider NYS staying there. I agree with those who feel that NYS needs to be moved to a permanent location and I suspect a more affordable, accessible, and flexible location is highly unlikely to emerge after we've watched Mayor Holliday and other leaders search high and low for an appropriate location. This site in Low Street is not the lesser of any number of evils. This is on its own, I believe, an excellent opportunity. I would like to also acknowledge that as a parent and a volunteer and a former nonprofit administrator, that NYS is an exceptionally well-run department. Its growth has been very strategic and very creative and has happened without burdening the city financially. We have a truly remarkable department supporting youth and families in the city. A city of our caliber needs to have a stable and responsive Youth Services Department. It serves the needs, it serves needs that are separate and distinct from the school department. It duplicates nothing else that is happening in the city. It serves the disenfranchised and the disconnected in a very special way. And it provides high-caliber programming for all kids, different ages, abilities, interests, backgrounds. NYS is, most importantly, I think, helping parents and the community to grow good citizens, but it cannot continue to do that under duress in a crumbling temporary location. City, it is time that the city located NYS in a centrally-located, safe, flexible, permanent home so they can continue to serve the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, advance Janice Bonacorsi.
Hello, Janice Bonacorsi, 53, Turkey Hill Road. My kids, one's in college and one's in high school, and they have both grown through NYS. They did the school program, the summer program. They volunteered there and they worked there. NYS is their community. And the community within Newburyport is really important. We build this community, we find places for our community. The, for example, the Senior Center, that's a community, but it's not just for seniors. The rest of the whole city grows from the community space. So building a space, while it's named Youth Services, it's going to build the community in Newburyport. It keeps people living here, it brings people here, and it just makes the city a better place overall. And it gives a great reputation. I love Newburyport and I really think NYS has been such a great benefit to this city and I fully support the feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you. James Snow. There's got to be a Game of Thrones in here.
Different topic. I attended the budget hearing and I had some questions and there was some recommendations for money that was to be spent from free cash. And one of them was the $50,000 for Parks Headquarters. And I would urge us to not spend that money on property that we don't own specifically where they want to put it. I don't think that that's a good fit. I think it's time that we found a permanent home for Parks Services. They're floating around. There's only four of them that are full-time employees, so I think it's very important that a department have a specific place to meet and also to put their equipment. Because we're paying money for equipment that then is left outside. There was a request for a tractor for the schools at $54,000. That's an incredibly large tractor. I bet even the Parks Department doesn't have one that's quite that elaborate. And the Parks Department offered to do the fields for like $22,000. Between the employee at $48,000 and a tractor at 54, we're at $101,000 for the same job. We were told during last budget season that money that was collected from the using of the gyms and so forth would be used toward, you know, to redo floors and pay expenses for the fields and so forth. And yet, there's a request for $16,000 for the mullen gym floor. And then there was a request for mullen for a loading dock and sidewalks. And at one of the recent meetings, I believe the mayor said that there was a balance left over from the amount of money that was appropriated to repave the parking lot. And so I would like us to look into that to see if that couldn't cover those two requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Gallagher.
I am Sean Gallagher. I'd like to say 70 Low Street, which is my office, but I actually live in Salem, Mass. I'm the superintendent. I just want to really articulate how important Youth Services and Andy Egmont has been to the public schools. And we're hearing all these wonderful programs that are being offered to the students, which is truly remarkable. But for us, on our end, Andy also provides professional development with our staff. We collaborate a lot on grants. And we also brought in the Home for Little Wanderers this year, which is an extension of support for families outside counseling, for families and students. So I see this as a great opportunity in this location for us to build programs with the Youth Services and also within the school department to really give our students and families the best opportunity for success. Lot of challenging times today, as we all know, with the increases of anxiety, depression, and mental health. And I just think that this partnership and the location would be so beneficial to the entire community of Newburyport. And I just want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to say a few thanks. Thank you.
Good evening, Judy Tom, 39 Lime Street. And I'm here to represent Newburyport livable streets. We have an event that's on your agenda tonight to be approved, hopefully in cooperation with the Parks Department. It's for June 23rd. And we've been working very closely with the Parks Department and we've been in communications with the Ward 1 and Ward 2 city councillors regarding all the communication that we plan to make to residents and to abutters to the event on the 23rd. So, and I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have. Thanks.
Aaron Newman.
My name is Erin Newman and I live at 8 Francis Drive in Newburyport. I'm speaking as a friend of NYS. My daughter, Mariah Newman, has been part of NYS for many years. Andy, Margot, Lee, Tina, and countless others do yeoman-like work for our community and for our children every single day. NYS empowered my daughter, Mariah, to find her voice and in doing so, it really changed her life. She's graduating from college in a couple of weeks and she's going to be a teacher, in large part due to her experiences at Youth Services. Please vote in favor of a feasibility study of the Low Street property so that Newburyport Youth Services can continue to change lives and empower our youth. Thank you.
And that will conclude public comment. Now mayor's comment. Just an aside, we'll be taking the NYS issue up a little bit later in the meeting, so it could be a little bit of a late night unless the council decides to, chambers. But right now, we have the mayor's comment.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, councillors. Acting President Earle. Thank you all for coming tonight to speak in support of the feasibility study for Youth Services. It's wonderful to see the youth, families, and members of the school community coming out in such great numbers to support this. On April 10th, the Armory Commission voted unanimously to approve the surplus of roughly two acres of the property at 57 Low Street to the city of Newburyport. The city has been using this site as our emergency ops center opens once or twice a year when something happens, primarily on Plum Island, essentially. So it really is an underutilized building. This was a major step in acquiring the property and in the goal of constructing a new Youth Services building. We'll be working with DCAM, which is the State Department of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. They handle all of the state's buildings to finalize the sale of this building over the next several months. I'm asking the city council tonight to vote to support the $65,000 to complete the survey and environmental wetlands delineation requested by the National Guard. Today, we received a proposal from Meridian Associates to complete the survey work at 8,200. Andy Port believes that's a little high and we will still do some negotiations around that number. The majority of the funding would be to address the feasibility study to locate a new Youth Services at Low Street. While I feel really confident that Low Street is the ideal site for Youth Services, we also take one more look at the Brown School site, as requested by several of the, a couple of the city councillors. This is an important study. This will provide much-needed clarity on the future of Youth Services and the redevelopment of the former Brown School site. I am looking forward to learning the results of the feasibility studies. I'm sure many of you are also. So please, I encourage you to approve the appropriation. There's a rough chart that Ethan Manning, our finance director, put together for staying at Brown or moving to in my update. I also know that there's been some conversations among councillors about our bonding capacity. You'll also see attached to your update tonight, a two-page memo also put together by Ethan Manning that looks at capital projects that were in discussion. We're looking at every possible potential future capital project that is before us at this point. And you'll notice if you read his report that as we project out for 10 years, our bonding, our debt, would only be about 6% of our operating budget. And our goal is to always stay between 8 and 10%. And this would bring us well below that and being able to support the new building on Low Street for Youth Services. 41(c)(1/2). You know, we sent a home rule petition to the state for them to approve us to put this question on the ballot in November. Once the home rule petition came back, it's been in the hands of the council to begin to identify the parameters around 41(c)(1/2). You heard a couple, or at least one senior speak tonight about this issue. I can't tell you the calls and the people who stopped me on the street and talked to me about how difficult it is as a senior on a fixed income trying to continue living here in the city. I'm asking that you please get this out of committee, come up with the parameters that are needed in terms of, you know, they're before you now in terms of the things we need to look at. People need to have lived in Massachusetts for 10 years, Newburyport for five, own their own home, et cetera. You know what those parameters are. Ethan is going to do a present, short presentation after I finish so that everyone can get a better understanding of what we're talking about with 41(c)(1/2). I really urge you to do this for the sake of our seniors on fixed incomes who own their homes in our city. You also have a couple gift acceptance before you tonight. The Friends of the Council on Aging raised $25,000 towards the purchase of a new needed van for of a new needed van for Council on Aging. We also have a small donation for two thousand one hundred and ninety dollars from the performing, the Port Performing Arts that sort of closed that final gap for the purchase of uniforms. The uniforms are in for the high school band, and they, I understand, the students will be wearing them for Memorial Day. Looking forward to seeing the new uniforms. Disability swings. You heard the chair of the Disability Commission's talk tonight. I can't thank the Disability Commission and the families who came together to raise awareness about the need for additional handicapped swings. And the transfer before you tonight will add additional seven swings for ages two to five for children with disabilities. The NRA home rule petition that you voted on at your last meeting has been filed by Senator DeZoio on April twelfth. It's Senate Bill two-two-oh-two. It was referred to the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government, and the House concurred today and filed House Bill four-one-six-oh in terms of moving the home rule petition forward. I'll keep you posted on how that works its way through those Senate and House committees. The paving plan. DPS opened up bids for paving and sidewalk construction on Friday. They were very pleased with the bids. I had hoped to be able to announce who the contract was going to tonight, but they're still under some contract negotiations. We should make those decisions in the next two or three days. We anticipate work beginning on High Street, as I mentioned before, coming from three roads all the way down to Ken Street, Pleasant Street, and Toppens Lane, as well as some additional money we received from the state to pave Caspen Park. We anticipate those projects to begin on or around May sixth and continuing through early June. Notifications will happen to all abutters of those particular sites before the milling and paving begins. Phase two will begin on Merrimack Street from the roundabout and continue to Ken Street. And the, that will begin after July one, once our new allocation of Chapter Ninety funds drops. Crews have been out with patching potholes. This winter was incredibly difficult because of the rapidly changing temperatures, and I think as you travel around all of our communities around Newburyport, you'll notice that all the communities are faced with the same challenges with our roads. So we are ordering another hot box, which is a four-ton hot box, which will be here this week, so we will have two that will be able to be out in the secondary streets patching potholes. In addition, our general foreman is out evaluating all the trenches and secondary roads that we can use this small milling machine called the zipper, which we'll also rent, and we'll begin cutting up some of these secondary roads from Monday through Thursday on a regular basis, then Friday begin paving them. This would make a huge improvement in some of the conditions that we're struggling with with our roads. The Plum Island air vac pumps are in, and they work to begin to replace the old pumps out of the Ovalway Station on Plum Island, begins today and should extend through May eighth. We don't expect any disruption in services. Would like to welcome Don Shaw, the Sewers Collection physician. This was Jamie's position, who was hired and began April first, and Julie Spurne Knight, who started this last week as our business manager. I know I'm getting off topic in terms of what's in your agenda, but some of these are really important. The Superior Court has settled the Crow Lane lawsuit. I'm going to say that again. The Superior Court has settled the Crow Lane lawsuit. Please let me know if you would like a full copy of the settlement. I'd be happy to send that to you. But essentially, what I've listed here for you are the A through K. I won't read them all out loud, but these are the items that have to be completed by June thirtieth. New Ventures has already put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars back into the FAM. As you know, that account is supposed to be there in case something happens to landfill in the future. So those are the things that need to happen by June thirtieth, or New Ventures will again be in contempt of court. There's a little, a couple paragraphs there about a visit to Nashua to meet with Mayor Jim Donches and his staff to talk about what Nashua is doing in terms of CSOs and the work they have completed to date. It was a very productive meeting, and I thought you would like to know about that. And the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission had its semi-annual legislative meeting with mayors and managers, with legislators, and Senator Lewis and Representative Tucker presented a presentation to all of us on the bills that are before the legislature on education funding. I am happy to report that we will be doing a ribbon cutting on May thirteenth with Governor Baker for the garage at four-thirty. So it won't actually be opened on the thirteenth. We had to arrange the schedule based on the governor's availability. It will be within a week to ten days of that ribbon cutting, so all are invited to come and celebrate. And finally, Congressman Molton is doing a town hall meeting at the Senior Community Center, May fifth, at three o'clock.
Any questions? Good morning.
Thank you.
None, thank you. Thank you. Ethan Manning will offer us a succinct presentation regarding forty-one C and a half.
You need me to move. Move. I keep on unplugging the plug. I'll get out of the way.
Sorry, Charlie. It's okay. Good evening, everyone. I would also note that I'm joined here tonight by Jill Brennan, city assessor, who's worked very closely with the office. I want to give you guys a quick overview on what forty-one C and a half is, both for the council and for the community, since I know there's a little bit of uncertainty out there about what it actually is. So what is it? It's a clause of mass general law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five. And unlike all of the other tax exemptions, this one is different in that it actually needs a vote of the elector. And it's also different from all the others in that it's actually a percentage of the residential value as opposed to a fixed dollar amount like the other exemptions in place. As the mayor alluded to, you have to be seventy years old to qualify. The city council does have the option to lower that to sixty-five. You have to be domiciled in mass for ten years, ownership in mass for any five years. The income limits are tied to the state circuit breaker tax credit, and there is no asset limit. So how do you apply? It's the same as all of the other exemptions currently in place. It's one form, four pages. You fill it out in the assessor's office by April first, and you'll qualify whichever gives you the most amount of money. The exemption amount, these are based on FY nineteen values, could range anywhere from three hundred thirty-two all the way up to one thousand three twenty-six at the max percentage of twenty percent. We recommend starting the program at eight percent, which would increase the current forty-one C exemption from five hundred slightly up to five thirty-one, based on FY nineteen values. We also adopted five C and a half, which is a little bit of a confusing statute. Essentially, it doubles this exemption over time, and I'll give you a quick example to explain that. So my example is Mary. She moved here in nineteen seventy-four. She's seventy-six years old, has an annual income of forty thousand dollars comprised of a few different sources. Since her income is a little too high, she does not qualify for forty-one C. She does qualify for the CPA exemption. She would qualify for forty-one C and a half if adopted. This is Mary's annual budget. As you can see, housing eats up about half of her budget at nineteen thousand, followed by other pretty much nondiscretionary purposes, leaving about forty-two dollars left over per month for discretionary spending. So Mary's taxes in year one. So she applied for forty-one C and a half. She got the exemption of five thirty-one. So her home is assessed at four hundred seventy thousand dollars, resulting in a total tax bill of six thousand one forty-eight at the total tax rate. So after that five thirty-one, she owes five thousand six seventeen in taxes. Her net tax bill last year was five thousand nine fifty-six. So because that five thirty-one exemption brings her bill lower than it was last year, she would not qualify for anything beyond that five thirty-one. So her net tax bill is five thousand six seventeen. In year two, however, her exemption now theoretically goes up, goes up to five forty-five. Her total tax bill is sixty-three hundred. It went up under Prop Two and a Half. So after that exemption, she owes five thousand seven fifty-five. Her net tax payment last year was five thousand six seventeen, so she'll receive that base exemption of five forty-five plus a hundred and thirty-eight, which is that difference from what her net tax bill would be this year minus her bill last year. So overall, her net tax bill is flat with where it was last year. This trend continues going into year three. She gets another exemption of five six sixty. Her tax bill is six thousand four fifty. After this, she owes about fifteen, fifty-nine hundred. Her tax bill last year was fifty-six hundred, so she gets that base exemption of five sixty, excuse me, and then the additional exemption to keep her tax bill at that five thousand six one seven. So you can see kind of how this works. Eventually, as taxes go up, that additional exemption goes up as well, up to the maximum, which is, which is the exemption multiplied by two. So what is the current assistance available to seniors? We have a few different statutes out there. Seventeen D is for the surviving spouse and elderly. There were nine of these granted in FY eighteen. Thirty-seven A for the blind. There were eleven granted in eighteen. There's a number of clauses that apply to veterans twenty-two through twenty-two E. There were ninety-seven of these granted in FY eighteen for an average exemption of two thousand two sixty-five. Forty-one A, that's a tax deferral. It's not used that often because the city does become a first lien holder on your property. However, there was one that was granted in FY eighteen. Clause forty-one C, that's the fixed exemption of five hundred dollars that doubles up to a thousand based on that additional exemption. And you can see the income limits are about thirty-five thousand dollars for a single person, fifty-three thousand for married, and there's also asset limits as well. There were forty-seven of these granted in FY eighteen. The CPA exemption, you only need to be sixty-plus to qualify for that with the income limits of seventy-five-five for one person and eighty-six thousand two hundred for two people. And there were two hundred thirty-four people that qualified in FY eighteen. And of course, the tax work-off program. This is a fairly well-utilized program in the city where you can work up to one hundred twenty-five hours at twelve dollars an hour to knock off one thousand five hundred from your annual tax bill. And lastly, that state circuit breaker program comes right off your income tax bill from the state, and that's a max one thousand one hundred credit. So our current alternatives that we looked at as a finance team in considering whether or not to go ahead with forty-one C and a half, where do we keep forty-one C as is, keep that fixed dollar amount of five hundred dollars? Do we increase it to a thousand dollars fixed? Or do we look into adopting forty-one C and a half, which is that fixed dollar amount set by the city council? I'd point out that the biggest difference comes into play as to how many people would qualify. So currently, forty-seven people qualify for forty-one C, whereas we estimate approximately two hundred people would qualify for forty-one C and a half, helping an additional hundred fifty senior households in Newburyport. You can see the net cost to the city highlighted there. The state does receive reimbursement from the state for each exemption granted, so the more exemptions we give, the more money we get from the state. So you see the net cost there to the city. Right now, it's about eighteen thousand dollars that comes off the bottom line on our annual budget. That would go up to eighty-seven thousand three eighty-one if we adopted forty-one C and a half. So obviously, the administration is recommending that this be placed on the November twenty-nineteen ballot. We recommend keeping the minimum age at seventy. Studies have showed that the most seniors in housing stress are those over seventy, over eighty years old, not so much less than seventy. The income limit, we recommend setting it based on the household income as opposed to the single person limit, which you can also do. And we recommend that anyone who kind of gets caught in limbo there during those five years would be grandfathered in so they're not left behind. There's approximately five owners that would be impacted. And that's the full law. These slides are up on the website for anyone who would like to take a closer look.
Any questions on the council?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. The approval of the minutes for the April eighth meeting. There are four transfers. Transfer forty-nine, our parking, fifty-four thousand to parking facility and permit expense. Transfer fifty, police, fuel oil, eleven thousand to maintenance, same amount. Transfer fifty-one, salary at the libraries, librarian, seven thousand seven hundred to AV material, library supplies, and administrative expenses. And then transfer fifty-two, again salaries, library, staff, eleven thousand dollars to building maintenance. All four of those transfers to be referred to budget and finance. Following communications. Communication one forty-two, Newburyport Spring Festival, five twenty-six to the twenty-seventh this year, Public Safety. Communication one forty-three, Cruising the Fifty's Car Show on eight fifteen, two thousand nineteen. Communication one forty-four, Newburyport Fall Hobbit's Festival, ten thirteen and ten fourteen this year. Next communication is Witch's Night Out, ten eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Next, communication one forty-six is Downtown Trick or Treat, October twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Communication one forty-seven, Invitation Nights on December sixth, thirteenth, and the twentieth of this year. Communication one forty-eight, Dead Race, eight one, two thousand nineteen. Communication one forty-nine, excuse me, with respect to the Yacht Walk is removed at the request of Councilor Devlin. We'll take it up in the regular agenda. Communication one fifty, Fifth Annual Harbor Side Half Marathon, five K, eleven, ten. All the above, including that, we'll go to Public Safety. Communication one fifty-one, A-Frame Request, Wells Co. LLC to license and permits. Following appointments. Appointment, first reading, reappointment, ninety-seven, Peter Flay's, sixty-one Pleasant Street, number, unit number seven seventeen, Human Rights Commission. Appointment number ninety-eight, Thomas Getz, thirty-six Broad Street, Human Rights Commission. And the following appointment, ninety-nine, is to be referred to planning and development. Stephen Delisle, one ninety-five High Street, zoning vote of appeals until five thirty-one, two thousand twenty. So the following, the following are items noted below. These will be removed from the respective committees. They'll be out on the floor so that when they're reached during a regular agenda, they won't have to be removed. They will be suitable for motion approved. Budget and finance, transfers forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight. License and permits, appointment number ninety-three, which is Bruce Birdwell. Appointment number ninety, coming out of Public Safety, Dr. Sam Marabi. Excuse me. And the following communications, also in Public Safety. Communication one twenty-nine, one thirty, one thirty-one, one thirty-three. Communication one thirty-seven, one forty, and one forty-one. And that with the change of Communication one forty-nine is the consent agenda as amended.
Yeah, could I please remove transfer fifty-one and transfer fifty-two?
Motion to approve as amended?
Second. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Mayor's update?
Motion to receiving file?
Second. In favor?
Aye.
So moved. Communications?
Communication one twenty-
Mayor's update?
Motion to receive and file?
Second. In favor?
Aye.
So moved. Communications?
Communication 120 is the tabled Central Congregational Grant Award Letter.
Motion to move to the table?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to refer to budget and finance?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Communication 149, which is the New Report Art Walk, same one that was removed from the consent agenda.
Motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the emergency preamble?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Zaid, I'm sorry.
Can we just read the, is there an emergency that's drafted? Can we read into the record so we have?
Happy to, Counselor. Emergency preamble dated April 29. Soon to charter Section 2-9B and further as defined in Section 1.7 Sub 7. An emergency exists due to the fact that the matter referenced in Communication 149, 4/29, 2019, known as the New Report Art Walk, is time-sensitive due to the date of the event being prior to the next council meeting on May 13. Therefore, the council hereby affirmatively declares an emergency exists such that Rule 12A be waived and Communication 149 may be voted upon its first introduction to this council. Slated, Councilor Devlin.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the emergency preamble?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
So motion to approve the emergency preamble, Communication 149. Counselor Agman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Azid?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Thank you. So emergency preamble needing two-thirds passes. That leaves the matter of the communication on the floor.
Motion approved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I had a conversation, lengthy conversation with Julie Cook. There were loose affiliation of the people who are participating in the Art Walk. They want to have a, they wanted a tent and a table with chairs to give out informational brochures. They just, there were loose affiliation, so they got organized after our last meeting. They didn't realize what they had, the amount of work they had to do, and they did their best. They have reduced this, and I would offer an amendment to this. They're just going to have a table and two chairs, and they're going to hand out informational brochures about the Art Walk. And the Art Walk is meant to bring, it's not something that's before us, but it's meant to bring awareness to the, you know, many different cultural aspects of Newburyport and places to buy art.
Any further discussion? Counselor Khan?
Thank you, Council interim president. I just want to explain my no vote, and I think part of it is, and this is something I think we talked about before, about emergency preambles for events and timing of getting applications in. So I just wanted to explain that that was the reason I do hesitate for this because I really think there's a process, and I would love to make sure people are following that process. It sounds like this is a minor kind of a request, and I believe they've done this before, if I'm not mistaken, in the past they've done the Art Walk. And I guess that's a question. So if they have done this in the past, and we're just doing this again for them in the next year, it'd be helpful for me before I vote.
They have not done this part in the past. They haven't done anything that required us to vote on. The Art Walk itself is in the different locations, you know, art galleries, firehouse, there's some nonprofits in there. They don't need anything from us. This is not an event, we're not approving the Art Walk. Where they've decided to get a little more notoriety, I guess there was some problems with, in the past couple of years, there's complaints about some of the banners that they were using to announce the Art Walk and to direct people. So they decided that this would be a way of doing the same thing, have a table where they can tell people, here's your tour, here's where you're going, here's your map. They thought it would be easier to do it that way. I think we've got First Amendment problems trying to tell somebody that they, without the table, I think they could stand out there and hand out as many brochures as they want in the bullnose. It's public space, so free speech. So they're not here asking for permission for the Art Walk because there's nothing there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
So moved. To appointments. Actually, Mr. President, my mistake. We should have gone to the two transfers that were pulled out of the consent. Transfer 51, I think, is first up.
I like that we went to mine first. Transfer 51. I approve on the order that was made.
Can you read it?
Transfer 51 is salary of the librarian, $7,700. That's from, the two is audiovisual, $3,700, also to admin expense, $2,000, and also to library supplies, $2,000.
Yes, I'd like to refer that to Neighborhood and City Services rather than Budget and Finance.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Transfer 52, please.
Transfer 52 is, again, the library. It's library staff, $11,000 to a maintenance building in the library, same amount.
Motion to refer to Neighborhood and City Services.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have Appointment Number 92, Ron Zambo, 58 Lime Street, Unit 1, to the Community Preservation Committee, representing Historic Commission until 4/1, 2022. We also have two reappointments. Appointment 94, Don Little, 6 Cottage Court, CPC, until 5/1, 2022. And Appointment 95, Brian Greenberg, 29 Lafayette Street, to the Disabilities Commission, until 3/1, 2022.
Motion to approve collectively?
Second. All those in, roll call, please.
Give me one second, Mr. President. 94 and 95 collectively. Counselor Agman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Azid?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Motion to take orders 97, 98, and 99 collectively?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Khan?
Well, yeah, point of order. I don't know if did we receive and file the mayor's report? We did. Thank you.
He's done. Any further discussion? All those in favor taking them collectively?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Collectively.
Any discussion? All those in favor? So moved. Here's, we have no ordinances.
One more order, Mr. President. 100.
Order 100, which is the resolution recognizing New Report High School, 2019 valedictorian and salutatorian.
Motion to table?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Any items, if I'm not mistaken?
Right.
Budget and Finance.
Motion to remove Transfer 48 in part.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Any items, if I'm not mistaken?
Right.
Budget and Finance.
Motion to remove Transfer 48 in part.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Any items, if I'm not mistaken?
Right.
Budget and Finance.
Motion to remove Transfer 48 in part.
Second.
So moved.
Mr. President, if I could ask the chairman at this point, so you removed in part, which part did you remove?
Just PL 007, which is Youth Services Funding for the Feasibility Study, $65,000. It's on page four of the package that's referred to. It's for the Youth Services Funding for Feasibility Study, $65,000.
Second. Mr. President, if I could ask the chairman at this point, so you removed in part, which part did you remove?
Just PL 007, which is Youth Services Funding for the Feasibility Study, $65,000. It's on page four.
Page four, I see, $65,000. I got it, thank you. Is there, has been a second? Is there any discussion on the approval? At the time, talk.
So in committee, we had a general discussion of this, and I'll try to articulate what I think the contours of that discussion were in Budget and Finance. I think our difference came down to predominantly one of timing, and the issue was whether or not we should privilege this $65,000 transfer for the feasibility study, or the feasibility study for the Low Street site should take place along with a consideration of some of the other sites. So for instance, the argument was given by what turned out to be the minority, that before we knew if we could purchase the site on Low Street, we would need to know how much we were going to sell the Brown School site for. Before we make that decision, we would need to know how much affordable housing was going to be into that building. Why is that the case? That's the case because that will, you know, the amount of affordable housing would determine how much revenue we get from selling the Brown School, all right? And therefore, that would then determine how much we had to make up in selling, in developing the Low Street, 57 Low Street site. And I think the Ward one counselor can straighten me out into other aspects of that. But that, again, I think that came down to sort of the argument that there were a lot of moving parts here and that we should continue them simultaneously. The majority on the committee, on the other hand, felt that we should privilege the 57 Low Street, that we needed to find out whether or not that was a suitable site before we could consider it, along with the other alternatives. Especially, we need to do the Phase 1 environmental scan, which is critical for that property. Secondly, wetlands delineation, and then, of course, the surveying and separating it from the National Guard thing. So the majority in the committee felt that this was necessary information that the city had to have in considering this site. And we also, in committee, requested that a portion of the funds be used to review the Brown School site and consider both alternatives. So again, out of committee, two of us were in favor of recommending approval and one opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, yes, the minority vote, as is often the case in Budget and Finance. So this is a hard conversation to have. You know, you hear all the public comment tonight, and maybe Andy will see fit to play this for kids at Youth Services, show them that even if you think you're going to lose 10 to 1, you should still get up and say what you think, because you've been at it for a long time, especially this issue. So I wanted to really start off with what I think are some positive things, some acknowledgements of things that I think maybe are assumed in fact at this point, hopefully, having been at this since I started my term and, as I'll talk about, has gone before then. First of all, here are some stated assumptions, I think. Newburyport Youth Services needs help. It needs a better location, there's no question about that. It needs a permanent location. I don't think there's a whole lot of disagreement anymore about that, Mr. President. That's number one. Number two is, you know, in that same context, we value Youth Services highly. Third one is easy. Brown School is in need of repairs. If you're not sure about that, just take a drive-by, and it will become immediately apparent. The next one is that, you know, a lot of time has elapsed on this issue in general. We had a public testimony about 25 years ago, this being discussed, at least in the context of Youth Services. But the Brown School in particular has been a sore issue in my ward for some time, and I think that predates my time as well. So those are some fundamentals, maybe we can keep those in mind. So what are some goals? Number one is to do something good for Youth Services. I think that we generally all agree on that, that there's no possibility or potential here that nothing gets done for Youth Services, that there isn't anybody that supports that. Number two was a stated goal to get some level of affordable housing out of the Brown School. That has not been the focus tonight, but having been through this for years, that is another big consideration for the Brown School. Number three was to be respectful of the neighbors in the South End when this building is redeveloped. However it's redeveloped, whether it is with Youth Services plus housing, housing only, Youth Services only, whatever the case might be, and not to, after many nights we've spent on this floor talking about being and pushing for sensible development in the city, not to be the ones to go out and bludgeon a neighborhood with what amounts to extraordinarily high density for that, for what is a very tight part of the city. Next one is not to overburden residents with more taxes, that we don't necess, I mean, it's funny to talk about this on a night where we talk about 41C and 1/2, but there is a consideration here for cost, and unfortunately, we don't have the luxury, because we are not as rich as we may like, to just simply ignore that aspect of it. And the final one is to do this in a sensible amount of time, and the time consideration has come in many times because of the condition of the Brown School, and we've heard all about the bubble gum and the boiler and all those sorts of things. So what has the city done to date? Because I get the sense that some counselors have not been on this ride the same way that perhaps myself, and while I won't speak for anybody else, the Ward 2 counselors certainly have been on this ride as well. In 2014, the city did commission a feasibility study, believe it or not. We spent about 50 grand, I think, maybe between 40 and 50. Winter Street Architects out of Salem did it, and they were essentially given a set of parameters to study the Brown School. Low Street didn't exist at that time, that wasn't even a consideration. So we spent this money, and we received a report that's publicly available, you can get a copy of it. And what you need to know about that report is there are several assumptions that go into a feasibility study, both financially and operationally. So when that report went out, the base assumptions were Youth Services is going to stay in the building. There was actually, you know, at least on the city side, some understanding of the finances, which was that we intend to extract value out of part of the building, take that value and put it into the portion that Youth Services will remain, and there may be some additional money kicked in by the city to enhance the repairs that would come as a direct result of the funds coming out of the other side of the Brown School. Okay, so that's a financial formula. That report got done. In 2017, the city went out to RFP, and this has been talked about, batted around here a little bit on the floor, I'm not sure everybody knows the whole story. Went out to RFP with requirements. Again, more assumptions baked in. Youth Services has to stay on site, the buildings can, there can be one building with both uses, or you could split the building and have two uses. Those were some of the things that went into that. You have to put some money in for Youth Services and blah, blah, blah. You know, RFPs can be 30 pages, so you get the idea. Three responses came back to that. So what's interesting to me is that there's a lot of discussion sometimes that we don't know what the market will support or will support. We don't, we may not know now in 2019 as well as we'd like, but we sure as heck knew back in 2017 what the market would support, and three proposals came in. One for 17 units with three affordables, two affordables, pardon me, one with 19 with three affordables. That was one developer off, take your pick. Do you want 17 with two or 19 with three? Second option was the folks that did the Kelly School, well-known now to the city, offering 24 units with two affordables, if memory serves. And the third one was the Y with a complete affordable, and that was 29 units. And all of them hovered around the same as around $800,000, just going to round it, give or take, with a little bit less from the Y in particular. So we proved out in the market that at least the market would accept coexisting uses. So I think that needs to be done away with, that we haven't tested that. We went out to the real market, and we had three real bidders come in, real developers telling us they would do it. What's my whole point of telling you this? RFPs, which are typically the end result of a feasibility study, are based on assumptions, financial assumptions, operational, and those things are policy decisions. And so if you put garbage in, you will get garbage out. If you do not take the time to figure out what it is you want, and you go out and you spend money, you will get a report, it will look nice, but it will not answer all the questions. So here are some questions that I'm ready to ask you before you vote on this tonight. Are you ready to tell the residents of the South End that they should be prepared for a policy passed by this city council that we are going to, the main plan for the Brown School is to quote "maximize its value"? In tonight's mayor's update, you have some basic formula. This is the financial formula, which shows that we are apparently going to get $3 million for the Brown School. I had some preliminary numbers last week, and we've, the building has appreciated half a million dollars in four days, so that's pretty impressively nice. So here are some questions that I'm, I'm ready to ask you before you vote on this tonight. Are you ready to tell the, tell the residents of the South End that they should be prepared for a policy passed by this city council that we are going to, the, the main plan for the Brown School is to, quote, maximize its value? In tonight's, uh, mayor's update, you have some basic formula. This is the financial formula, which shows that we are apparently going to get three million dollars for the Brown School. I had some preliminary numbers last week, and we've, the building has appreciated half a million dollars in four days, so that's pretty impressively nice. That's one question. Are you ready to tell residents what the disposition is going to be of the gym at the Brown School? For those who haven't been on the ride with us, that's a pretty controversial question. Will there be a gym there? Will there be no gym? And then conversely, will there be a gym at the new facility? And that can yield several different potential permutations and combinations. Are you comfortable with moving forward with a project that calls for some level of bonding? Here, it's calling out a three-million-dollar bond on this project. Are you ready to move in that direction? Not saying you have to be ready to bond the three, but are you ready to go there? Are you ready to tell taxpayers and residents you represent that this is where we're heading with this project? When remember, just a few years ago, the formula was about eight hundred coming out of the building and maybe two hundred, two-fifty coming from the city coffers to make a million-dollar investment in the Brown School. Are you ready to wait until FY twenty-two to do this project, which could be between two and three years, depending on when in FY twenty-two? That's not my date. That's what's in the CIP. It's on page thirty-six. You can take a look at it for yourself. Um, are you comfortable with how this project fits in with all the other things we talk about? It's an election year, so we'll be talking about streets and sidewalks again. I think the mayor made a wonderful effort here, and I really do appreciate it, to give us a bonding schedule. It's something we have talked about at length, and I think it deserves more study, and it is appreciated, because it's really been a huge question. Um, are you ready to, to, to make a decision on the playground at the Brown School? If you thought the gym was controversial, wait until you hear about the playground. That's also very controversial. What's the point of asking all these questions? These questions translate into inputs that you would put into a feasibility study. If we, and no amount of money we spend on a feasibility study will answer those policy questions. That's why they pay us the big bucks here on this floor. So there's been a lot of discussion about how youth services and the Brown School are two distinct issues. The reality is, they meet in the finances, and unless they somehow don't meet in the finances, they are linked together, and they always have been, and I think to me, they always will be, because if you look at these sale proceeds here and you say, boy, what happens if those don't come through, or what happens if the neighbors of Ward One, who I will vehemently and strongly defend against any kind of crazy development down there that is way beyond what I think the site can hold, which is a debate all to its own, then we, we have a big question on our hands. A year ago, many councillors, myself included, said, we're not doing anything with the Brown School until youth services has a plan, and I think that was something that done out of respect, for the value youth services bring. And recently, the Affordable Housing Trust came to us and asked for thirty grand for a study. That's sort of been mothballed in committee, and we've said, well, we don't know, because we don't know what we're doing. So why would we move forward with this part and leave all, and when we've, why wouldn't we give the residents of the South End the same respect and the other, the other thing? So you may think that by voting yes tonight, you are actually helping youth services. The reality is, you're not helping anybody, because until we answer those questions, and Ward Two councillor and I sat in a selection committee for six months trying to answer those, and by the way, there is no answer. It's a, an ordering of priorities, and for something to win here, something has to lose. That's the reality of this situation, and I think Director Porta said this, a building can't be everything to everybody, or whatever, maybe I'm, it's not quite a quote, but it can't solve all the goals. It just can't, and I agree, and I still agree with that. So why should you vote no tonight? You should vote no tonight, because until we answer those questions on this floor, we don't have any business going out and writing a check for sixty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money, without at least giving them the respect of responding to these questions. And again, I'm the Ward One councillor. This is my responsibility. This is my job. I talk to a lot of people as well, and people are waiting for a resolution on it. The final thing I will say, so that I don't sit down without offering any ideas, is that obviously my preference would be to, to table this or send it back to committee and answer these questions, and they're very painful questions. We may be able to answer the Brown School density question by way of a zoning amendment. We have an ordinance sitting in committee that we don't have not moved on, which was a disposition order. But if you really, truly, honestly are sitting in your seat and saying, you know what? All I want to know is if we're going to disqualify the Low Street site on something basic, then you don't need that much. You need meets and bounds. You need to know what it is. You need to delineate the wetlands, so you know what's actually buildable, and that's about it. That's really, truly, all you need. A phase-one is just a paper exercise. Somebody goes and looks at paper. It has been my experience, and I think I'm entitled to speak from some level of experience, that everything is contaminated in Newburyport. Everything, to some degree or another. And a phase-one typically does not answer that question, so why would you spend money on it at this point? So I'm seriously asking you to think about this and ask for your consideration for the residents of Ward One, for the residents of the city, because I spent all weekend putting on all my hats. I wore the Ward One hat. I wore the citywide hat. I wore the budget and finance hat. I wore the NYF supporter, even if nobody believes me after this meeting hat, and there's none of them that gave me a yes feeling, that I could balance against other things. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Agarwal?
Yeah, I'm going to support the, this particular order, but I, I want to recognize the validity of, of what, um, a colleague from Ward One is saying. So first, uh, you know, he, he's right to point out that we really don't know that we can get three million dollars for the Brown School when the only offers that we've had to date are for eight hundred thousand, um, with a range of seventeen to up to twenty-nine affordable. Probably get, you're going to get more than eight hundred thousand, but to get three million, we are going to have to tackle eventually these policy questions. Basically, you'll have to really minimize the amount of affordable housing, and that's a policy decision, and it, it really means you got to, you have to demolish the gym. No developer is going to pay three million dollars for that site with a gym, um, when that, they already have to be burdened with a playground. Also, you know, I, I question the four-and-a-half-million-dollar cost estimate to construct. Uh, I, there's another, I think, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to design. I mean, really, the building that we're looking at on Low Street is just a garage. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a gut job, and it doesn't come with a gym, and there is no playground, and there isn't really a parking lot. This is dirt. Uh, but, you know, I'm going to vote for this because I, I think, uh, it does help us answer some of the questions. Um, it, it's true, the councillor is correct. You don't really need sixty-five thousand to do a survey, um, a wetland delineation, and, um, a phase-one. And a phase-one, again, is just, you're just looking at the historical uses of the property. You know it actually goes and drills any holes in the ground. That's all true, um, but I'm going to support it because I think on our committee, planning and development, you know, we've had an ordinance that I put in a, a year, over a year ago. It's been kind of sitting there, and we laid out these six scenarios that one of the members of the public mentioned, and this will help fill in the blanks on, on some of those scenarios. So, you know, I have my own personal views of where it's headed, and I'm not committed to anything, um, nor is the council. You know, we have to vote to acquire property. We have to vote to sell property, and we still have to rezone the Brown School, by the way, because nobody can build really anything there without eight votes. But I'm going to support this order, um, because I do think also the land is useful to the city. Even if we find out that it can't be used for youth services, there are other possible users. Um, we heard earlier about, uh, the Parks Department, who don't have a home. This could be their home. So, you know, it, it's worth kicking the tires, I think, on the land. Sixty-five thousand, I admit, is a little high, but it'll, it, it's worth supporting, I think, so I'm, I'm going to vote for it.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a, I have a family member that uses the, uh, youth services quite a bit, and, uh, I think the, one of the, when I go down to pick them up at five o'clock at, at night after, after school, I walk into that gym and there's twenty, thirty, forty, fifty kids in there playing all different type basketball, this, whatever. So my main issue was what was brought up number two. Will the Low Street facility have a gym? Because if you don't have a gym, you're going to lose people, because if they can't come in there to play basketball and, and whatever else they do, kickball and, uh, the thing in the circle they have in there, I mean, you're going to lose heck of a lot of people. The summer programs are great. They're great. My grandson has used them many, many times and enjoys them many times. In fact, tomorrow, not in some program, tomorrow with the basketball, they have, he's there for five fifteen for a basketball program sponsored by youth service. So I am a supporter of youth services, but I want them to see a gym, go to Low Street, or I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Jinta?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a, a clarification on this. So this transfer forty-eight is one-point-six-million dollars. Are we just cherry-picking one item out of it? I just want to make sure we're all on board with that. Okay. So that's a, that's a big number.
We're going to sneak the other one-point-five-million by. Not that that's ever been done before.
As far as my thoughts about this, I'm, I am going to vote for this. I'm in support of this. I, I think the location makes a lot of sense. It's really at, uh, if you will, we're, uh, right across from the middle school, kind of around the corner from the elementary school. Um, obviously, the National Guard hasn't used this building in a long time. It, it makes a lot of sense, um, but I, I say that in full support of this idea, and I hope it all works out, but the Brown School is a big issue, and I have told many residents, and I'll say it again with cameras and microphones on, I support the residents that live around the Brown School, and I, I like their ideas and their thoughts, and I will be supporting them and the Ward councillors here in their neighborhood to make sure that this neighborhood is not overburdened with a project that is not appropriate for the space. So although I, I am full support of Newburyport Youth Services, it does not mean I'm going to abandon the residents of Ward One and Two. Okay? I just want to make that clear. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
So I am too, supporting the sixty-five thousand dollars. I think it's a, a worthwhile study to be done. I do have one question, though. Um, when we initially talked about this, there was never any part of the funds that was going to go to do an assessment of the Brown School. Where did that come from? Maybe I can get that answer from the Budget and Finance Committee.
I asked if that was possible in, um, I asked the, the planning director during budget and finance discussion this. He said yes. I believe he's gone to the mayor, and the mayor has agreed. So that's how, that happened as a result of discussion in committee.
So what are you planning on doing with the sixty-five thousand dollars part of the Brown School?
Yeah, I think, I think part, the part where I think we need to take a look at is, uh, you know, some of the councillors have mentioned tonight, what is the cost to build a gym, uh, down on Low Street, uh, as an addition to the buildings down there? We've already determined the structure that's down there today. It could be used for a substantial portion of the youth services facility, but we need to evaluate what's the cost to build a new structure down there versus renovating the gym space that's, you know, at the Brown School, and, you know, essentially evaluate what is the cost to renovate the entire first floor of the Brown School for youth services versus building that space and, you know, retrofitting the space down on Low Street. So having a fair comparison between those will give you, you know, you saw some brief numbers, sort of estimates, but those are back-of-the-napkin-type estimates. Um, this, the architect will give us more detail on those, and then we'll be able to fairly evaluate, you know, how much financial sense does it make to renovate the Brown School for youth services versus building new? I have found that when you work with an older structure, it takes a lot of work, particularly in the awkward layout of the Brown School. It may be, it may add substantially to the cost, because the contractors aren't doing just stick construction going straight up. Um, they're actually spending a lot of time trying to customize pieces to fit around, you know, these awkward angles and things, uh, and work with older structures. So we, we would have to actually, for instance, renovate the entire HVAC system, electrical system and things like that, for the gym space to keep it there as its own, you know, facility, if we break it off from the, the school building itself that's, you know, disposed of. So, um, we think that, we should think the study itself, we, we've had a discussion about this with some of the councillors, particularly the Ward councillors, and we think it's important to evaluate a comparison between what it would, what it would take to keep youth services at the Brown School. The prior study that was done was done with the assumption that housing would go in the building itself, the core building generally, and youth services would be in the gym space and the ancillary space in between, uh, or as an addition to the gym space. So this study here is going to particularly look at youth services down on Low Street versus doing it at the Brown School on the first floor and using the gym space there, and what are the, what are the, you know, pros and cons financially? What are the other factors you might want to consider?
Yes. Can I ask one more question? Thank you. Um, the last time at the Budget and Finance Committee, we said that we actually were going to check on the land and do, investigate whether we, there was going to be any remediation required. Where did that end up? Because it sounds like, based off the Ward Two councillor's comments, we're not doing that.
Yeah, no, actually, as part of this feasibility study, we're proposing to do as a phase-one assessment, I may, we may, depending on what the phase-one assessment shows, and we may incorporate into the scope of work for the LSP, to look at the, do a couple, a couple of test pits for us on the site, to evaluate essentially where we would, based on the feasibility study, in conjunction with the feasibility study, do some test pits where we would be putting a building up, um, so we can kind of get a sense of that. Also, in the parking area, for instance, we renovate the parking area, so we'd want to do some test pits and kind of see, is there any contamination there? And what are the, as the, um, one of the councillors mentioned, the paper trail, you look at, um, you know, what historically has gone on in that site, you know, what has gone on next to the site, you know, that might have contributed over time. So we're going to do the best due diligence we can. Um, obviously, you know, we ran it, we run into situations periodically. The garage project had asbestos in the soils. Uh, we didn't know that when, when we were, um, starting the project, and we, we doubled that, uh, and were able to, you know, address that in the budget as it was. Um, the rail trail obviously has been delayed because of some PCVs on the river. That stuff does happen, um, but this area of the site was not as heavily used, um, you know, by the National Guards, so we're hopeful that that will not be the case, but I think it would be, depending on how much we can cover with the budget, I would like to possibly do some test pits in addition to the, the paper review of what has been going on on the site, so we can get, um, you know, specifically where we would put a building.
Thank you.
Counselor Agarwal?
So, so you are going to be able to start on a phase-two, if you're going to do test pits?
Well, I, I would like to know what, if we're going to put a building there, if our feasibility study shows a layout for that building, how it best lay out. I would like to know, and I think it's all in our best interest to know, if there are any issues in those locations. Um, essentially, you know, something we might have discovered if we were able to do test pits, or in the old Fitness Factor building, uh, when we took that down.
Thank you.
Counselor Tarkov?
I, I just wanted to clarify a, a few things about transfer forty-eight for, for the public. Budget Finance only considered this sixty-five thousand dollar transfer, uh, for the feasibility study. We did not consider anything else. A member of the public, I think, referred to, uh, a hearing that we had, which was actually a city council hearing, uh, which is mandated by the charter, in which we discussed CIP in general, the whole five-year. Budget Finance, we haven't dealt with it. We're going to do what we did last year. We're going to consider, uh, all the capital projects, uh, at the same time that we do the budget, and so when we, uh, when department heads come in, we'll ask them about them at that point. But we took this out of order, because basically, the administration asked us to, uh, because of the time constraint.
Counselor Devlin?
I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of the sixty-five thousand dollars. It's in line with our policy of the past of gathering as much information as possible and, and find out all the alternatives and as much information as we can. I, I would just caution, not only was there forty or fifty thousand dollars spent on a feasibility study for the Brown School, uh, actually, there was several public hearings. The gym was packed at those public hearings, a lot of discussions, there were a lot of neighbors there, so, so we can't just throw that all away. We have to remember that. This, this feasibility study really does need to, you know, garbage in, garbage out. That's maybe not the way I would put it, but let's make sure we give it good information and we come away, I want to see a feasibility study that is honest because if not, we're going to, we're going to sit here and poke a ton of holes in it. If we can poke holes in it, you know, it's going to have a real difficult time passing in my opinion. So, thank you.
I just had a question for Director Port as well I meant to ask, but in the mayor's update, the feasibility line is $150,000. I don't know if you, you know, missed this little thing here and then, so what's the discrepancy between the 150 and the 65?
Yeah, so the feasibility study is really a schematic design, so that, we believe that that can be accomplished in the budget that we've put before the $65,000 here. I know, I think that, those numbers Ethan was working on and there was some discussion at that point, we had some discussion after that about the fact that full design of the building would cost some more money, but that would be something we decide, you know, you would decide whether or not to spend money on based on the feasibility study. So, you know, based on experience, feasibility studies are going to cost you in the area of like $50,000 and we need to, or 40 to 50, the prior Brown School study I think was above 42 or something like that. So in my, my opinion, the 65 is adequate to cover that. If you want to do a full design, meaning plans that are ready for construction, that's going to cost us more money and we're getting the order of magnitude of, say, $150,000 or more.
Any further discussion? Counselor Brian?
Last I heard, and on this gym again, the last I heard from reading in the paper that the mayor's comment with the gym would be way, way down the road. From listening to you, you're sounding like you're going to do a study on it now.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, one of the things we would take a look at is, with the architect is options. I agree with you, I think it makes a lot of sense to have the gym where use services is, if it's down there. I agree with your earlier comments. But I think we need to, as part of that, we'll be asking them, is there a way to design the building such that that could be done at a later date? Now, that's not something I would recommend generally, but it would, we would take a look at that to see sort of bifurcate the costs so we could see if that was to be done at a later point for some reason, we would know how that, what that would cost and how it would work, you know, separately from the core building.
Why would you do, just do it as, you know, at the time, the building's going to be done over, I just, I can't see doing something at a later date.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it, to me, it makes perfect sense to do it at the same time we're down there, renovating the existing structure, adding a little admin space in the back of it, and then the gym space being essentially as a L or extension off of that. But I agree, I think it makes sense to do it all at once and I.
The last little positive I've read in the paper, thank you.
Sure.
I want to stay there Andy, just for a second. Any further discussions or questions? Counselor Jinta?
Just, just one more thing and not to beat a dead horse, but you can't have a use center without a gym.
That's, I agree with that. That's my opinion.
You need to have a gym down there with that building. It complements it.
Right.
You know?
I would completely agree with that and that's why, that's actually part of the reason why when we were talking with the National, National Guard, we were talking about adding some space at the back. Originally, they were only talking about, they were, you know, considering possibly giving us only up to where the fence goes, if you're familiar with that parcel there. And we had talked to them about taking some additional land at the back, which is where you get to the, just over two acres, because that would give us space to put the gym in there if we did not have that extra space. And they, they have voted, as the mayor mentioned, they voted to approve this, subject to us preparing the plan, you know, that's part of the funding request tonight. But they would give us additional land because they recognized that we would need additional space in order to put the gym in there. So yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any discussion? Let's remove the question. I'd like Counselor Z to take heart. I don't think he can lose us by 10 to 1. There's only 10 sitting. You want to roll call him?
Thank you, Mr. President.
So this is motion approved, the $65,000, NYS PL 007, moved by Counselor Tantar, seconded by?
I think it was me.
EV. Thank you.
Counselor Plonel.
Yes. Okay, motion approved. Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes, changing my vote to yes.
Got you. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Anything further from Budget Finance?
Motion to remove transfer 45.
You've already removed it.
Oh, that's right. Motion to approve transfer 45. What is it?
We have a question, what it actually reads.
Would the clerk?
On behalf of?
Please.
There's a transfer, it's parking, transfer from the parking fund, $99,500. Transfer to clerk administration, $5,000. Part-time officers, $64,000. Parking office supplies, $2,500. Parking ticket permit expense, $28,000. Did it was a second?
Yeah, a second.
Thank you.
This is the first year that we have had a receipts reserve for appropriations. Parking fund up till now, it was a revolving fund. In constructing the budget for fiscal year 19, mistakes were made. And the budget, what we budgeted was too low, didn't take into account some of the shift differentials. Then after the budget was passed, we also added more hours for the, for the parking monitors and that added some of the funds. Secondly, the mayor has requested that the space in the parking garage that was intended to be used by the Transit Authority is instead going to have the parking department relocated there. It's a small office, probably won't be open all the time, but it's part of a move that will open up space in City Hall for this, you know, Chinese, whatever that game is, moving things around. So there's more space needed. And so there were funds in this transfer to buy supplies and for that office. There's additional cost in there for the passport system, for take care of parking that was not in the last budget. And so that takes care of the $99,500. We also, what one counselor asked, what happens to the rest of the money that's in the fund? And the central administration was to hold that back until we saw how the opening of the garage worked out, see where we had to possibly send money.
Any further discussion?
Came out of committee 3-0.
Counselor Agaman?
Oh no, I yield to councilors. Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to make a few comments. It did, it was 3-0, just so you know, in committee, I did support it. But my heart isn't in the parking department being in the garage, in all honesty. It makes no sense to me, with all due respect, it's actually more of a swing for me because it sort of illuminates the problem with the MVRTA, which we still don't have an agreement with and apparently we're having ribbon cutting on May 13th and we've been looking for that agreement for, I have anyways, for some time. And they were supposed to take that space and that was part of the formula there and it may not end up being big bucks, but now we've just assumed another space that will have costs. I'm also concerned about the public restrooms that are going to be there that will maybe unattended. It's my understanding that there's two spaces, there's public restrooms and then there's the office. So the restrooms can remain open while the office is empty. I mean, my experience with restrooms on Plum Island, if they're unattended, it is a disaster. So I really, my heart is not in that. The other thing I would say is that this is the first year we're doing it this way, just to remind everybody, now we have this revolving fund. So what you're seeing is, these are monies coming out of the reserves of the parking from basically from prior year, essentially prior year profits is my understanding. And so we get a better view and I think one of the challenges has been, is the city council has been making a lot of changes to the parking program, including the 8pm, which is I think what the Ward 4 counselor met when he said shift differentials. So it is getting more challenging to track what the changes are doing to the finances because there are too many changes happening at once, like when we change from a dollar to a dollar 50, that now seems very benign to like the 900 other changes we made in the subsequent months. And so just as an aside, the PAC met last Thursday, we're still dealing with a lot of issues around there and there's lots of questions and I, I think we want to get something we can really sit on for at least a year, meaning a policy, a pricing structure, something that we, so, so that when we make a change, we actually have a sense for what it did. When we change it every three months, we lose the ability, I think, to track that and understand it. So I did support this and with those caveats and comments. Thank you.
Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, no, I apologize, I didn't catch that we were moving city employees into that space. So, you know, how many employees, I'm a little confused because some, you know, the parking clerk who's also our city clerk, I assume he's staying here and, you know. So I'm kind of interested in the details, you know, how many employees, are we just talking about the enforcement officers or we? Also, it's a pretty big space. It's several thousand square feet as they're called, is it 3?
Oh, no.
How much is it?
I don't know exactly. Yeah. Please.
I think that the city clerk could probably talk more about the actual staffing that we have currently downstairs in the basement. Essentially, it's whatever office space we have in the basement would be moved over to the office that was going to be occupied by the MVRTA. That space is not, I think what you're referring to, counselor, is the entire space is a few thousand square feet. That includes the lobby, which is the lion's share of that space. There's also two public restrooms there, some mechanical, there's a couple, a few mechanical rooms and custodial closet. But the office itself is less than a third of that space. It's basically that corner area is where the MVRTA would have had their office located. So it's, it's about, I think it's the equivalent of two office rooms. If you, I was down there last week, it's about, it's about that size.
Yeah, I guess we don't want it to be empty. I mean, I agree with the council from Ward 1, unattended bathrooms never a good idea. So, and if we have a crunch for people in the basement and they can move here, okay, that makes sense. But two things, first of all, I don't think the city council has ever formally given custody of the facility to anybody, so we should probably do that. So I would move to divide the question to, and I'll make, you know, and the second question would be giving custody of the garage to the parking clerk, because we haven't done that. You know, it's a limbo, just like the Brown School has been in limbo since the school relinquished it, which is, didn't work out great. And the second is that, you know, if the MVRTA is going to take that, I mean, I'd like to hear from the planning director if he's still here, but, you know, it really should be more active space, you know, you should have a retailer in there. So again, we're under the gun, the thing's supposed to open in a month, I get that. So we got to stick in who we can, but you really should be putting it out for bid for a retailer. So that's my comments. With that, I'm going to make a motion to divide the question on custody of the parking garage.
Do I hear, before, we need a second. An opportunity for a second.
Is there a second on the motion to divide? So what would the two questions be, Mr. President? What would the, like, what funding, dividing the custody of the garage from the parking, from the grant, the transfer of money? Second, does that reduce the amount of the transfer? Sorry, Mr. President.
Yeah.
No.
No.
Oh boy.
I'll defer to the clerk. I don't think it does any amount of the transfer.
My question really is to the counselor from Ward 2. Was the custody question part of the transfer?
Well, I guess it's a question for the administration because I'm not, again, I was asleep at the switch. I didn't realize we were moving any parking officers in there. So under what offices are they moving in there? Are they going to run this garage?
Maybe I should address that as parking clerk, if I could. There are, there's an office downstairs in City Hall right now, which other people want, namely Molly Attenborough is just busting out at the seams. And so we were told that we should move to the garage. Who's the "we"? The "we" is Mary Jo, who's, works for me, the one full-time, and all the part-time people, including a fair amount of equipment, which is all your handhelds and all the collection material and the files, if you will. And that's it. And they would be there, they would be housed there. They don't really spend much time in the office downstairs, they wouldn't spend much time in the office over in the garage. How much space it is, I wish I had measured it. It's larger than the room downstairs, it's probably twice as large as the room downstairs. And the downstairs room, I would guess would be 10 by 15 maybe, or 10 by 15. So speaking also to the garage restrooms, they are proximate to it. There is a space between the garage restrooms and this new garage, new office for the parking. I don't know what could go in there, if anything's going to go in there. There's been some other ideas floated around. It's not really my, my position to fill that space. I have some ideas, but it isn't my position. So in any event, to, to the point of to divide, with all due respect, I don't think the custody was part of the debate on the floor. I don't think putting $2,500 in the transfer implies that the building is going anywhere.
Okay, all right, I would draw the motion then.
We'll draw the second. Thank you.
Thank you for the compliment. I don't know if I want custody of it.
Maybe this is to the chief administrative officer. Did I miss something? What happened to the MVRTA and were they paying us rent? Were they paying us anything for this?
To answer your second question first, yes. I think that's what the counselor from Ward 1 was alluding to as far as the lease agreement that we have with the MVRTA that we were working to execute. I think the original intention was for the MVRTA to have office space there, not necessarily to manage and maintain the lobby and restrooms, but just to have a presence in the, in the multimodal facility. I think it was contemplated that there, that anyone going to the garage would be able to grab a schedule of the bus service or perhaps buy a ticket. So that's no longer going to be the case, we're actually working on, working on whether or not we can have a vending machine there as well to, so someone could buy a ticket. You can actually buy them on the bus as well. So the, so the MVRTA was going to have office space there, they're no longer intending to do so, but they will be paying, there will be a lease payment. It is, it is overall, either way, a modest lease payment to cover some of those common area charges for the, for the garage.
I did see hand originally, Counselor Tantar, you.
It was addressed. Yeah, well, I'm sort of swayed by the Ward 2 counselor and I think we should, I think whether the debate about that is, was originally part of the question, it is a question. And I think it's one that, to bury my disappointment that we're talking about it two weeks before it opens, it's one that we should resolve. I mean, if you want to do this or not, or do you want to trace down an opportunity for somebody else to be in that space? I think it's better to, we just had a long debate about temporary locations, doesn't seem to work out too well. We should probably answer the policy question first. And I do think that RTA agreement is central to that, just to understand what, what is our relationship with them and how does it relate to that space if it does anymore, maybe it doesn't at all, maybe they just say goodbye. The other thing I would say about the restrooms is, when the parking department is there, it's not going to be really people, a lot, you won't walk by and see people in there all the time. You have to be out with the handhelds in the vehicle in order to enforce. So they're coming in and taking a new fresh handheld that's got fresh batteries, maybe coffee and a break, but this isn't something where, you know, so I would put it at more vacant than not. And that's a question of whether you want that or not. So are you saying, if I may through the president, the $2,500 is really the part of this that goes to the, to the relocation and the other two are really for the, what they state, which is the overtime or whatever, the part-time?
All the others is, all the other parts of the transfer are operational, they're really just funding a budget line item that was short. The $2,500 says it's for initial office supplies for that building. Frankly, most of the supplies that are going into that room, as I understand it, from the parking staff, they're, they're coming in without any strings, they're just volunteer equipment, volunteer equipment's the wrong term. It's equipment from, that people had, desks, their desks that they found, their tables, chairs and desks.
All right, well, let me, let me put it to my colleagues this way, I mean, we should, we should stop this now. We should stop the parking department from moving into this building until we figure out those answers. Sounds pretty familiar to my comments tonight, but don't you think it makes sense to answer that question? Get the, do what we were supposed to do a while ago, which is to resolve, I mean, because to me, my mind is racing towards now we're back to the questions about who's going to maintain the building. When you talk about custody, you know, that was always a big question, whose responsibility is this thing? And so I don't know if, I don't want to attack $2,500, it seems like a waste of time, but we do need to resolve that question and it's not clear to me how, how to get there. The only thing I have in front of me is $2,500 bucks, which quite honestly doesn't seem to do the trick, so.
Counselor Tantar?
Yeah, we, this measure is just a transfer, all right, to cover a budget line that's deficient. We don't have anything in front of us that, you know, concerning what, you know, whether or not the parking department should locate in the garage or elsewhere. I'm not sure, until the administration, you know, asks us for funding, right? I mean, how do we get involved in the Brown School? We were asked to fund it, right? That put, you know, first the school department had to give over the school and then we had to fund the operation out of that site. So I'm not sure whether or not we have a role in deciding where, you know, departments locate. I think there's a, there is a different policy question, which is, you know, whether or not we would like to see that occupied or rented and, but I don't think, I don't know how we're going to address it in this measure.
Counselor Agaman?
Well, again, I already drew the motion, I agree that there's nothing before us now, but again, the way that the state law works is, when you have an asset, it's in the custody of the legislature. So for example, on the Brown School, when, by state law, once the school committee surplused it, it reverted to the city council. The city council never voted to authorize its use by use services, but because we all like use services, we're like, okay, also they can move there. So there was a step that was skipped. There was, no, you cannot, you cannot occupy property under the jurisdiction of the city council without the city council's permission. So again, we could do the same thing here because, you know, we want, we want a parking garage, but it's not the way you're supposed to do it. You're supposed to assign a, a city asset to a specific purpose. And we didn't do that on the Brown School after it was relinquished by the school committee. committee. I'd like to do it this time. I'd like to know who has custody of this facility and how we're going to use the space.
Consul Vogel.
I'll throw my two cents in. I'm persuaded by the argument that we're putting the cart before the horse. It troubles me that there's an assumption made here that we're going to go ahead and move people into that space. I think that by allowing the $2,500, we're saying, oh, okay, go ahead, do that. Again, it hasn't really been asked, doesn't even really seem like the proper protocol. So, I'm persuaded by that. I'd like to see that $2,500 taken out. If nothing else, that'll maybe, you know, start the process of, what are we going to make the space and who's going to clean the bathrooms?
Can I motion?
Sure. I'll make that motion that we approve this without the $2,500, that we remove the $2,500.
Most are men by removing the $2,500?
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second. Eight seconds.
Matt. Comment for administration?
Yeah, I guess as, as still being, I guess I'm still officially can call myself the new guy and not having a lot of institutional knowledge of what happened. From my understanding though, and I can, as far as the maintenance and custodial responsibilities of the building, that would be something that DPS is taking on. We're actually submitting in our budget right now additional positions that, for staff that will take care of those restrooms as well as the public restrooms throughout the downtown area as well. So, that is something that we've, we factored into this plan. Again, I don't think it was ever the intention that the MVTR would be the, the, I guess, maybe they would be the eyes in the parking lot as far as there's a body there, maybe, but that wasn't the, I'm sorry, but that wasn't the intention of why the MVTR would have a presence there. I think that, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I think the administration felt that it's a parking lot. We have, we have space needs for our parking staff, and that's, that was, that was our line of reasoning for where we were going for tenacity in that space.
Consul Vogel.
Thank you. Right, in doing so, and thank you very much, and I appreciate that. It does seem a little odd that we're, I'm not, I'm closing it, and I'm just now learning that DPS is going to be cleaning the bathrooms. I appreciate knowing it. But nothing says we can't come back to this $2,500 or we can't come back to letting the parking staff go in there. I just don't like the tacit approval, sort of a roundabout way of saying, oh, okay, go ahead. So, I'm going to, I'm going to stick with my disapproval of that $2,500.
Consul Ragman.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's saying it's unreasonable for DPS to live there. We're saying that we never, I mean, I'm sorry, parking, we never authorized it, and that's not how you're supposed to do it. You know, you created a new city building and you have to, the city council, it's the elected legislature, has to say, you guys are going to run this. And I don't agree that DPS should be handling the bathrooms in their budget. It should be part of the parking budget, part of the parking garage. These are exactly the ones we have to work out. So, you know, let's, let's get our act together, we have some time, and do it right, and figure out, you know, who has custody of that asset going forward, and then you never have to come to us again on it. Thank you.
If I might, to the council's point.
So, really what would be in order, I suggest, I guess, at the next meeting, that it happens to be the same day that the parking garage would open, or at least ceremonial, that there be an order to assign the asset.
Ceremonial.
That we're not used to doing, but it needs to be done.
We get invited.
And so, someone needs a sponsor in order to assign the asset to somebody. We'll take it.
So, there's a motion to amend, Mr. President, on the floor.
Any discussion on that motion?
Any seconds?
There is a second.
They'll settle on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we need other main motion.
There's a motion to approve, is amended.
Any discussion on the original motion with the amendment? See none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, moved.
Yes, motion to remove Transfer Forty-Six Health Insurance Two Thousand One Hundred Sixty to Licensed Commission Clerical. Say, Monk.
It's already removed, Mr. President.
Ah, that's right. Motion to approve. It's Transfer Forty-Six.
Does anyone need it read?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. Any comment?
Yeah, just very quickly, there's more activity in Licensed Commission, so they need more money to keep minutes. Three, zero, in committee.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, moved. Yes, Consul Tantar.
A motion to approve Transfer Forty-Seven.
Second.
Any discussion?
This motion is for the $6,000 to purchase special needs swings for age, I think it's two to five. There will be swings in, there's playgrounds for both age groups, two to five, and then eight to twelve, two to eight, I don't know what it is, two to five and five to eight. All right?
It's good.
Maybe five to twelve. The, this, the, this is an indicator of the city's support for this program. Parents raised some money for some of these swings. They're a great success and, and statement on the city's part of support. Three, zero, recommend approval.
Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, moved.
We are done, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I have a question. So, we only approved from, from Transfer Forty-Eight, sixty-five.
Yes.
You're keeping everything else in committee.
Yes, everything else is staying in committee probably till June.
Okay.
So, we, budget finance hasn't addressed the rest yet.
I might suggest you need a motion to refer back, because it's removed.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
I think it's all been removed, so you need to refer back. I need a motion to refer back. So, moved.
So, move.
Second.
Aye.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Education Committee, right?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that our next meeting of joint education is Monday, May sixth, at 5:30 PM at the Senior Community Center. And everybody is welcome to attend, and everybody is welcome to send me agenda items that they'd like talked about. Thank you.
General Government.
Nothing to reply.
License and permit.
Motion to approve Appointment Ninety-three.
Sacca, any discussion? Yes, Consul Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was heard in committee and approved two to nothing. Mr. Burwell has a very interesting background and was enjoyable chatting with him. He has participated, not participated, I should say, but certainly has spent time watching the commission, understands its workings, and is excited to participate. We impugn you to vote yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Consul Ragman?
Yes.
Consul Junta?
Yes.
Consul Khan?
Yes.
Consul Brian?
Yes.
Consul Shan?
Yes.
Consul Tantar?
Yes.
Consul Vogel?
Yes.
Consul Azid?
Yes.
Consul Devlin?
Yes.
Consul Earl.
Yes.
Appointment Ninety-three approved.
That be it, Consul Vogel?
Yes, that's all.
Any comments from Neighborhood and City Services?
Tonight, sir.
Planning and Development?
Aye, yes, President, motion to remove Appointment Ninety-six, Richard Person for Rights Court. We're on board.
Second.
Oh, they both read them.
Second. To approve?
No, no, I'll get rid of it.
He's the outlier.
Any discussion on removal? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Second.
Yes, so we had it required under our rules, a full hearing, for Mr. Person, and there were no comments from the public. We didn't have an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Person, and we voted three to nothing to recommend his approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Appointment Ninety-six, Richard Person for Rights Court. Consul Ragman?
Yes.
Consul Junta?
Yes.
Consul Khan?
Yes.
Consul Brian?
Yes.
Consul Shan?
Yes.
Consul Tantar?
Yes.
Consul Vogel?
Yes.
Consul Azid?
Yes.
Consul Devlin?
Yes.
Consul Earl's. Motion approved.
Thank you, Public Safety.
Yes, motion to refer back to Public Safety, Communication One Thirty, Cultural Survival Bazaar, they were making some additions.
Second.
Any comp, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's referred back.
Motion to approve Communication One, no, I'm sorry, Appointment Ninety, Dr. Sam Moravi to the Board of Health.
Second.
Second.
All, any discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, this is a reappointment. We, it was recommended two to nothing. His resume, which we're going to deal with next, lists Harvard, Tufts, and then Brandeis. I think he's qualified.
Any further discussion? All those in, roll call, please.
Appointment Ninety, Dr. Sam Moravi, Consul Ragman?
Yes.
Consul Junta?
Yes.
Consul Khan?
Yes.
Consul Brian?
Yes.
Consul Shan?
Yes.
Consul Tantar?
Yes.
Consul Vogel?
Yes.
Consul Azid?
Yes.
Consul Devlin?
Yes.
Consul Earl's.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Motion to receive and file Communication One Forty-one, the resume of Dr. Sam Moravi.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, moved.
Motion to approve Communication One Twenty-nine, annual, eighth annual Pan-Mass Challenge Kid Drive.
Second.
Second.
Yes, you heard from Kelly Mahan and her daughter when this was first introduced. You heard from her last year as well. I couldn't get her not to show up. This is their ninth annual, I spoke to her on the phone, everything's the same, it goes off smashingly, and they had no complaints from the year before.
Any further discussion? Consul Ragman?
Any further discussion? No, standing up. Who's going to go again?
One quick note, on the insurance binder, it's, we're required by written contract, so I just insert to the order that we are requiring that we're an additional insured.
So, noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. Anything further?
Yes, motion to remove, communicate, absolutely, approve Communication One Thirty-one, Alzheimer's Association Ride to End Alzheimer's.
Second. Any discussion? Consul Devlin.
Yes, discussed this with the proponent, the applicant, they've done this before. It touch, it's one of those rides that starts in, in New Hampshire and goes through Newberry Port and doesn't stop, doesn't start here. They have race coordinators, they've done this before, and it's been no complaints.
Any further discussion? Hear none? All's in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm okay, thank you.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 So, moved.
Motion to approve Communication One Thirty-three, Ninth Annual, I don't know how to say the abbreviation, but it's Greater Newbury Port Ovarian Cancer Association Five-K Run-Walk.
Second.
Any second? Any discussion?
Yes, this has been run before, they spoke with the applicant, they're running everything the same, they have all their sign-offs, and they've had no complaints.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, moved.
Motion to approve Communication One Thirty-seven, the IPA Five-K for three dates.
Second. There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Consul Devlin?
Yeah, this is, again, another one that's been run several times. It starts and ends the Riverwalk Brewery. It goes into Newbury, mostly stays off on, out of our main streets, and, no complaints, and they have all their sign-offs and it's being run exactly the same way that it was the last year, and these are almost the exact same three dates. So, it came out two to nothing.
Yeah, I can vote in favor, I mean, mainly it's, it's in the business part, so it doesn't really have a big impact, but I just want to make sure I understand, this one's for profit, though. This one is not a charity event.
Correct, but I believe they do donate money to a charity. Last year, it was actually written on it. But yeah, it's for profit.
Thank you. Any further question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A move.
Motion to approve Communication One Four Zero, SIP Shop Support.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is being done in connection with the opening of an office that is there to lend, to lend support for breast cancer survival. It's being done in connection with a lot of the shops on In Street. They do have a bar and a roped-off area, which is required by the Licensed Commission. They do have a, these little trailers that are like mini-stores, and they're being populated with merchandise from the area stores around them. But it's really being done to recognize that this cancer recovery group is moving into offices and opening up offices on In Street. And they have noticed, they went and spoke to every store and person in, on In Street, and the new headquarters for the charity is going to be fourteen In Street. It came out two to nothing.
Just two questions. One is, there's no liability certificate in there, so, unless I missed it, I've looked through it a couple of times, but I don't see it. And number two is, I'm perfectly comfortable to move forward, but I just want to say that I think in the future, if the event is on In Street, it should go to the Parks Commission, because In Street is a park. I know that the lines are a little bit fuzzy on that, but the, it is a park, so just like other events that go through the park, and if it's entirely in the park, then I don't think they have to come to us at all, and they can just go to the Parks Commission for their approval. So, I would just, one motion is just to amend, subject to us liability if, and then I'm assuming they got one from the Licensed Commission as well, for their alcohol operations.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, they did.
Okay.
Because there was some discussion about walking across our property, meaning the way.
Yeah.
Because they're interacting with the shops.
Okay.
Can we put on the amendment first, unless you're, unless you're discussing the amendment proposed?
Or? No.
Don't you have the answers to this? The amendment is to?
To condition the approval on, you know, being provided with insurance.
Also, favor the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed?
As far as the parks, they were going to the parks the next day. I actually got those two confused, that we were discussing. So, they were going to the parks the next day for the, and we had recommended, we tell everybody when there's something on Parks Department, you also have to go to Parks Department. I can't more strongly disagree with the fact that we should not also, these are events I can't more strongly disagree with the fact that we should not also, these are events that's being held in Newbury Port. The Parks Department do not own the property that they're having the events on, so we also should have, you know, we should participate, and I think our rules and ordinances require us to participate.
Counsel Agaman? Well, we, just for information, probably we split the baby on that, so when we, if we were to, 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 a duration of a certain amount of time, they would have to come to the city council. But for just a one-day event, I think they can just go to the parks. But it doesn't matter. If they have to cross what is truly In Street, the old street, they need to come to us anyway.
This is kind of an odd event. In the way that they have this roped off, this will end up being more than what's on the parks land, so it will end up in our jurisdiction. And then the other thing people have to keep in mind, again, I call it an odd event. This is a roped-in event, and by the way, it's the city that's requiring them to rope it in, where you can have a bar from six to nine at night on In Street, and even the Splash Park, if, if you will, is all roped into this. So, it's almost like a private party, but it's not. People are going to buy bracelets. It's all for charity. The surrounding businesses are involved with this. When I first looked at this, I was like, you know, I was a little sort of stepped back on what they were doing here, but then it was mentioned to me that this is one of the chamber shopping nights downtown, and then it all made sense. This is actually going to be very popular, a popular event, I believe, once people are doing their things around town, and they see this, they're going to want to go in and see what's going on, and hopefully donate to the cause and buy merchandise in there. So, I think it's perfectly placed in, at that night. But it is, it is going to be a different look for us. We don't usually have events on In Street that are sort of roped in. So, my two cents.
Yeah, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I also just simply want to note that the event is designed to honor people who have survived breast cancer and have fought it, and it's an event before Mother's Day, so it kind of, it kind of all works. So, I just want to mention.
Any further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
This one, I have the motion to remove Communication 128. Guys, thank you, I got it, guys. This was not, this was not on the consent agenda, so motion move Communication 128.
Second.
All in favor of removal?
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any second?
Yes, this is the open streets, it's being done in connection with the Parks Department. There was a plan that was included in, with the application or a map, excuse me. Essentially, it's going from Atwood Park, part of Lime Street, down Purchase Street to Marlboro, piece of Marlboro, Lincoln Street, Pine Street, and the Perkins Playground. The idea is to close off the streets, but that's actually overstating what they're doing. They have movable barricades, they have many, many volunteers who will help keep traffic moving on the streets, but the idea is to open up the streets so that people can experience, you know, the freedom of biking and walking and, and, you know, scootering on, on the streets. In several intersections, one, two, three intersections that are marked in blue, they'll have police details there. Those are the intersections that have the most traffic, so that they'll make sure that people flow, that traffic keeps on flowing through on Lime, Marlboro, and God help me, maybe Bromfield, I can't read that very small writing, even with glasses on. So, and along the way, there'll be literature and things at each of the Atwood Brown School, the church, and Perkins Playground, some events for kids and adults alike, and it's basically just to, Judy Tyne is here if she needs to answer any questions, but, and Juliet Walker came to our, our meeting, but it's the wheeling and walking movement, and just the kind of complete streets concepts as well, so it seems to dovetail nicely. They did do it last year on Kent Street with the same idea, and I thought that went well, and was, it was kind of cool experience, and what I related to them is one of the cooler experiences, walking down High Street, and as participants in the parade, you do get a different perspective for your city from the middle of the street and walking or riding. So, it's a cool idea, and they're expanding it a little bit this year, and as we've discussed, it came out two to nothing, as we've discussed in this, we're okay, we're open to cool ideas, and, you know, it doesn't mean that if it doesn't work out, we can't say no next year or ask them to change it a little bit, so. And they've been extremely good to work with.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the last comment. I just want to thank everybody, Judy in particular, has been extremely proactive. As any ward councilor, I get nervous about closing streets. Judy has worked with my anxiety, so, and she's prescribing me some medication, so I'm feeling better about it. And I just preface, I, I'm not going to take any credit, but there's a plan to have a public meeting with the details TBD and to be coming forth, forthwith probably mid, sometimes next, next month, somewhere around Purchase Street, if we may, maybe the Emma, maybe the, the church there, and it just have been very proactive, and I greatly appreciate it, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. My only question for, for the committee is, you know, no liability attached here. I don't know if one is needed here, if one was provided last year, I didn't, wasn't able to find last year, is maybe, you know, is that something, or is this just sort of like it's a public street, so people walk on public streets anyways? That, that would be my only question.
Good question.
Counsel Agaman? Yeah, well, I think it depends. I think if it's the Parks Department that's sponsoring it, it's us, so we don't need it.
Okay, got it.
I actually think I failed to mention that, that's one of the reasons they partnered with the Parks Department.
Sure. Yep.
I'm good, actually, thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
There is nothing further.
Thank you very much. Public Utilities?
Yes, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I just want to give you an update. So, at our last meeting, we had the Solar AOB C legal agreement come in. It was a late file, so it wasn't in your packet, and it went to committee, and I just want to give you the brief update. It was reviewed by the city solicitor once, and the committee spent a couple hours going through it page by page, along with the sponsor, who's the Ward Two Counselor. Why am I telling you this? It's probably going to come up for a vote next meeting, and my goal in working with Molly, who's a staff who's working on this on the, on the city side, is to put in the final version of the contract in your packet. So, if anybody has any questions, just trying to avoid spending hours on the floor trying to go through 30 pages, or if anybody wants me as the chair to see if the president would accommodate a request to ask the city solicitor to come so we can get it done, let me know. I'm just giving you a heads up that it's coming. It's kind of a complicated program to even understand how it works, so I will try and explain that on the floor. Let me, let me, it's too late for me to try now. So, that's what I'm telling you. It's coming out most likely next meeting, and if there's any questions, please get in touch with me if there's anything I can do to help you understand it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Rules of the day.
All right, nothing to report.
Now, with the good of the order, the hands and the turn?
So moved.
So moved.
Aye.
Aye.